Commissioners, staff, evening everyone.
Good evening.
Evening.
The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from the commissioners?
Oh, sir.
None from me, Chair.
Any changes from staff?
None from staff.
All right. I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Teary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, that passes 4-0. Second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the October 28th, 2013 meeting. Any changes from commissioners?
No changes.
None.
Staff?
None from staff.
I would look for a motion.
So moved from the Chair.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 4-0. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The Dworsky Family Trust's application for interim use permit for soil remediation and soil storage for parcels located at the southwest corner of Dupont Avenue and 126th Street West. Mr. Slenia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, the application is for an interim use permit. It is a public hearing. As with projects you've seen in the past, we are dealing with the Minnesota River Quadrant. We've approved a number of interim use permits in this area, parcel in this area as well, and down here. We are now moving over to the other side of Dupont and looking at these parcels right here. To put this in perspective, Park Chrysler Jeep is located right here. Obviously, here's Highway 13. There are a total of four parcs, excuse me, five parcels of land involved with this totaling six acres of land. The site is zoned GIM, which is Gateway Industrial Heavy. The property is designated as Light Industrial and the Comprehensive Plan. The subject site is vacant, contains no buildings. Here's a closer look. Again, Park Jeep is right here. This is a overflow lot Park Jeep has used in the past. And these are parcels that have quite a bit of history. Some of it's turned back right-of-way, some of it's been owned by the Dworsky family for years. But there are a total of six parcels, portions I should say, of six parcels involved with There are no changes to the Park Jeep dealership at this time, however, as things move forward, they do have plans and they would like to approach the city with some reconfiguring here, once these parcels have been remediated and hopefully, project moves ahead on these also in the near future. As with the other IUPs and the other properties we've dealt with, they're very poor soils for constructing anything on these sites. A significant amount of peat in the area, and what the IUP allows the property owner to do is mine out the poor soil. There will be stockpiling of good quality soil coming out of the 5 and 13 project that would be stored on-site that then can be used to fill in the gap that's left from the removed peat. This gives the property owner then a quality piece of property they can sell and/or build on if they choose, with good soils, and we don't have to worry about sinking and shifting and so forth. That's obviously to the property owner's benefit, to the city's benefit, then we get a quality development out of it. We get taxed, taxable value out of the site, whereas right now, we're just dealing with unusable land, if you will. There is a chance the property owner would not pursue remediation. They are looking at all avenues and looking at costs and things like that. So there is a chance, and this is obviously up to them, they would not remove the peat from the site. The city is still pursuing a easement. It would be located in this general area where the overflow parking is, so that we would still have the ability to stockpile soil from the 5 and 13 on this property. So, in the end, the property owner may not use this opportunity to the fullest, but the city and the county still have the need for land, and we will be pursuing that easement with the owner. In either case, the interim use permit accounts for all those options. Let me jump to another image. So here's a survey, topo survey of the site. Again, you can see Park Jeep here, the gravel parking lot, and you can see there are some significant slopes involved on this site. It really falls off as you move north towards 122nd Street. There are also delineated wetlands on the property. The city is aware of this. As the applicant, working in partnership with the property owner, we're aware of these wetlands. They've been delineated, and we are obligated by state law to make sure those are mitigated. So right now, between city staff and the property owner, we are working through wetland replacement plan that is scheduled to go to the Parks and Natural Resources Commission in December. There are no deviations to the ordinance. Any wetland that's removed from the site will be mitigated through wetland banking, which is a process that's run through the state. So that is one of the conditions as we get to the end. We're playing with the timing of the construction of 5 and 13, as well as the weather and so forth. So, we had hoped to have some of these issues resolved, but we will not move forward with any mitigation or release any permits till those wetlands have been taken care of.
Chris, I could just add one thing on that. We received an email today, I was just looking at it, from the Army Corps of Engineers, and it looks like they are considering the Dworsky wetland as isolated and will not necessarily require wetland credits to be purchased. So, things might be easier than we originally thought with that.
Great. Thank you. As you noticed in the report and in some of these images, the site is heavily wooded. And if things were to move ahead as proposed with degrading and the soil remediation that's planned, the trees would be removed from the site. As with the Fairview Hospital project, the Park Niklet project, the applicant has calculated the tree value for the site, the city has those dollar figures, and when permanent development moves forward, will require them to provide a reforestation plan that satisfies those dollar figures. So in the report, I did outline some of those dollars. The total value of the subject site is, total value of the trees in the subject site is $33,000. The property owner will be responsible for a minimum reforestation of $13,000. They are aware of those calculations, and we hope sooner rather than later, if, or when, a formal project moves ahead, will include those requirements with the development. Commissioners, staff is recommending approval of the interim use permit. There were two conditions included in your staff background. I inadvertently left out a third that I'd like to add, and that would be on the screen now. The interim use permit for the soil processing and storage shall terminate December 31st, 2024. That is a date that we have worked out with the property owner. They're comfortable with it. I just failed to include that in the report. With that, commissioners, I believe Brian and I can answer any questions you have on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Slenia. Any questions for Mr. Slenia?
Just, so, the layout, currently, the homeowner's using the lot to store cars. Are they going to have to move those somewhere?
Yes, they-
What are they going to do to be able to have an overflow lot?
I believe most of those cars have been relocated already. I'm not, I'm not sure of their specific details. They do have another dealership in the metro, so I believe there's been some jockeying between the two sites. I did want to touch on this. You, in this image, you see an entrance out to 126th Street, the footprint of an office warehouse, and then the footprint of a parking lot. The planning commission, neither the planning commission or council are acting on this design right now, but the property owner was obligated through this process to show us, give us an idea what they expect to use the project for. So, again, if remediation takes place, things move forward, we hope this could yield a new office warehouse building in the area. And the planning commission and council would see that when it moves forward.
We have really two events. There's the possible remediation, but there's the interim use permit for the city to store soils.
Correct.
Correct.
So for the city to store soils, will all of the forestation, will all the trees need to be removed? Or would the trees only be removed if the remediation goes forward?
That's a great question. Brian, do you know if, is it limited to-
Well, the way this interim permit, or interim use permit is written, it would probably, you know, you'd be combining both. I would have to say if they choose to not follow through the remediation and only use that parking lot, we would not be knocking down any trees, yet the interim use permit still calls for the reforestation fee to be submitted, so I guess it would be probably best for the applicant to, you know, and I think the applicant is wanting to move forward because they know the ultimate goal is to get some more office, office space there, so. Okay, I was just curious.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think that overflow lot, I'm told, is used more from spring towards summer, when there's a lot of business going on. During winter, they don't have so many vehicles to be kept in the overflow lot, that's what I'm told. So if, I would assume that if the city has to have an interim use, they can use the same area that is being used as the overflow, and that would not require the deforestation because there's hardly any trees on that overflow lot. Chris, what happens with the peat? When they're going to do the remediation, they take out the peat, what happens to that?
As much as possible is, as much as possible is remixed with the good soil, to a point it's stable, and that goes back into the ground. And/or, it can be used on other projects or sold. It does have use, and actually, I believe this straight peat can also be used at the landfill for some of their daily operations. So it does have some value, much more value, once it's mixed with good soil.
Thank you. As you're aware, I'm always interested in the removal of greenery and trees. However, we can't have it both ways. This land is being, we hope you have the remediation done, so it can be developed. And if it's going to be developed, obviously, we'll have to lose some trees.
Correct.
I'm glad that the city have worked with the applicant to consider reforestation when development is happening. So I appreciate that. I think this is a good, this is a good application, a very positive one, because it brings forward the plant development of these areas. If the owner did not apply for this, it would have remained there. And as you said, the land is not open to development because of the condition of the soil, and when it is developed, then obviously, everybody benefits, the owner, the city, the neighborhood, and obviously, the citizens of Burnsville. So I think it's a good project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Teary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, the, could you clarify the plan and purpose for the future development of this site will be? Is that basically for overflow parking, or the applicant has other plans in mind? Have you received schedules of the plans? Any details?
The, that is a great question. The interim use permit requires that the property owner provide us an end land use plan, so we know what, so we know what they have in mind, and we know what the goal is. With that, they are working with a couple other people, and they are proposing, or they're anticipating it would be office warehouse. The image there, they provide is got a 57,000 square foot office warehouse building. This would be similar to some of the other office warehouse buildings that have gone up in the area. That is consistent with the zoning, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Are they absolutely obligated to follow this specific design? No, there could be some tweaks, and as the planning commission and council look at it, as staff looks at it, I'm sure there will be, but the intent is to keep it industrial. It's my understanding, as this moves forward, it would not be overflow parking for, or it would not solely be overflow parking for the vehicles as it has been in the past.
So there could be, in the future, some structure built on this site?
We certainly hope so.
Well, here's my follow-up question I'd like to ask, Chris. Based on my own experience, when you get, when you get into proposals of soil modifications and wetland issues or so, the cost could be unpredictable as you go forward. Now, assuming that we approve for the applicant for removal of the trees, we lose all the trees on the site, and a year down, two years down the road, the costs of soil modifications and wetland issues become unaffordable for the applicants. We lose the trees and the site sit there. In that scenario, how would the city, you know, respond to that, react to that issue?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, the intent is that we are sorting through those costs right now, and if the, if the property owner chooses to go through the remediation, they have all those dollar figures in front of them. Actually, there's estimates taking place now on costs and so forth, and staff has met with their development team to pin those down. So, we're not interested in removing any trees if there's no project occurring.
And, Chris, I could just add to that. I've actually been a part of some of those meetings, and those costs have been put on the table. In fact, the Public Works Director, Steve Albrecht, has, you know, analyzed those costs and during the meetings, brought those costs to the table to ensure they were still willing to move forward with the project. The benefit in this case is, again, there's a lot of dirt available to, you know, make this site a viable development site for very cheap. I mean, when contractors are looking for places to bring you dirt for pennies on the dollar, it becomes very attractive, because without that attractiveness there, it costs a lot to get rid of this material. But with that being there, it is very attractive. And again, the Public Works Director's been very forward with what the costs are, and we've come up with calculations, assuming full peat all the way down to the bedrock. I think in the last case, on the Assaford property, we actually didn't hit peat all the way down to the bedrock, so it was actually less than we assumed. So basically, our cost estimates, our worst-case scenario is if this is all peat all the way down to the bedrock. So those costs are on the table, and the developer is aware of it. Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Slenia. This is a public hearing. If anyone wants to comment or ask any questions, please feel free to step forward at this Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any further comments from commissioners at this time, or I will otherwise entertain a motion?
None from me, Chair.
All right. I'll look for a motion then at this time, and I think there was that added condition, which-
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the interim use permit for soil remediation and soil storage for parcels located in southwest corner of Dupont Avenue and 126th Street West with the following three conditions. One, as part of any permanent development, the reforestation requirements of $13,375.47 will be applied to the area and integrated into the end land use plan. Two, the grading or soil remediation permits will be issued until the, sorry, no grading or soil remediation permits will be issued until the PNC has reviewed and approved the wetland mitigation. And three, the interim use permit for soil processing and storage shall terminate on December 31st, 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Second?
My second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 4-0. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a-
This goes to what?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, you're right. This goes to the council when, Mr. Slenia?
This goes to the council at their next meeting. It is November 19th.
All right. Thank you. This will be there, in front of the council then, on November 19th. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Midwest Bank River Valley Commons, application for PUD amendment and preliminary and final plat to be known as River Valley Commons Second Edition for a 43-lot subdivision. Mr. Slenia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, this is a public hearing. The request involves preliminary and final plat, as well as a PUD amendment. The subject site is south of Highway 13 and does fall along 120, excuse me, 122nd Street, directly east of Parkwood Drive. Subject site is just over six acres in size and is zoned R3B, which is High Density Residential. It also has a Comprehensive Plan designation for High Density Residential, and it has actually a number of previous approvals on it for similar design that you're going to see tonight. Let me go through a brief history on the project to get everyone caught up to speed. The applicant, or the history begins in 2005, excuse me, I just lost my place. In 2005, the site was approved for a 68-unit residential, residential project. That began right away in 2006, and one five-unit building was constructed on the site, and that exists right here. In 2006, the one-way drive, run, one-way private road was put in, as well as visitor parking, which provides the configuration that you see here. These areas are visitor parking. There was also, some of the stormwater infrastructure was also put in place in 2005. Unfortunately, because of the slowing economy, the original developer did not pursue the project any further, and it stopped. With that, commissioners, in, most recently in 2011, Midwest Bank, as the property owner, came back, revisited with the city, and they received approval for 55 units on the same site. That was not pursued, although it was a very similar design and building orientation, just fewer units. The council then met with the developer and the property owner in April of this year. At that point, they had talked about fewer units, down to 43 units, with a reconfiguration. You'll recall, these were designed so that the front of the units on the perimeter, the front of these units faced out and faced 122nd Street. So actually, the front door, the front porch, was all designed to face out. That is the way the existing building sits. You'll see there's a sidewalk that takes you up to the entrance. On the other side was all the garage door accesses for the, for the project. So, the garages would be accessed off to the private road, and the front of the buildings was facing 122nd Street. This raised a marketing problem for a number of reasons, and I know the applicant can discuss that in a little more detail if you choose. But again, the project was still not moving forward. Staff has had a number of aesthetic complaints on the property. I know there's illegal dumping. It's not the prettiest site in town, just because of maintenance and partially finished development. Staff and the city are looking forward to bringing this project to a close, and we have been working with Midwest Bank and the developer on this, and we have aesthetically pleasing units that we believe are going to be able to move the project forward. The intent would be to develop the exterior units first. This would provide some buffer, some barrier to the project. I know that would help accommodate some of the surrounding property owners, to give them a buffer from the rest of the site, and just give the site a sense of place. From there, the applicant would move to the interior, and as those perimeter units are constructed and sold, landscaping would go in, and it would certainly improve the aesthetics of the site. There are two deviations being requested. The first gets to the setback. Here's a design of the new proposal. You'll see the driveway is accessed off the private road. The rear of the building is, functions more as the rear. It's got a patio, covered patio, and some outdoor seating that will help work with and give a sense of neighborhood to 122nd Street. Because of the change in the unit and the change in the design, the applicant is requesting a deviation of 14 feet. The required setback from 122nd Street is 50 feet. The applicant is requesting, it's, the closest unit is 36 feet from that property line. There's also a reduction in the number of trees planted on the site. The ordinance had called for 204. The applicant is proposing 158. That is a deviation, but you'll notice in the landscape plan, it is well-designed- Uh, that is a deviation, but you'll notice in the landscape plan, it is well-designed. Uh, they are doing what they can. The trees that are going in are oversized and exceed the minimum requirements for, uh, the application. With that, commissioners, I will jump to a couple other images. This is the same design, uh, we saw earlier this year. Um, these, this is an image of the perimeter units. When you're looking at them from the private road, this is what you're gonna see. Garage door here, main entry point here. This is a selling benefit because the previous design actually had the front door on the complete opposite side. It had it on one hundred and twenty-second street, uh, with limited places to park and limited access. Through significant design, uh, with the applicant and coordinating with staff, um, we have a revised rear elevation. This is a three-unit building. Uh, you'll notice this first unit has a brick, uh, brick base. The middle unit for contrast has a stone, and this has a, uh, brick base on the other end. These second-floor master bedrooms are actually cantilevered out a foot to give some three-dimensional characters to the rear of the building. The sliding glass door, and this is a seating area. This, um, overhang comes out ten feet from the back of the building, uh, which again, will give it some three-dimensional characteristics. Uh, and the same, uh, material that's used for the base of the unit, um, is designed with some planter boxes and, uh, providing a little more architectural detail to the rear of the building. Uh, I know the applicant has worked on this for quite a while, back and forth with staff. Um, in comparison, uh, commissioners, this is the original, uh, design we had seen with siding, uh, uh, two, two-dimensional siding on the back. Uh, there just wasn't a lot of architectural detail to it, and the applicant has done a nice job of redesigning that. Um, we have horizontal siding, uh, cedar shakes, as well as board and batten siding, just to give it, uh, a little more contrast, help break up the units. This is a significant improvement from what we saw earlier. Uh, there is still a condition, um, that no more than fifty percent of any single elevation be vinyl. Uh, that's been a condition, uh, starting back in two thousand and five, that the councils wanted carried through, uh, to make sure we're getting a, a little better quality, uh, a little better, um, detailing, I guess, on the exterior of the buildings, uh, rather than siding, or excuse me, rather than the vinyl siding. Again, we're looking at different materials, uh, changes to the depth of the building. Uh, this is significant improvement from what, uh, staff had been reviewing earlier and were supportive of it. Uh, again, we do have, uh, three reforestation requirements with this project. Um, due to the removals that took place in two thousand and five and two thousand and six, the applicant's required, uh, to provide thirty-two thousand dollars worth of, uh, reforestation. Uh, the proposed landscape plan provides forty-five thousand dollars, so that does satisfy the requirements. The applicant's also providing along the perimeter of the site. Along the perimeter of the site, uh, and around the fire station, these trees will be a minimum of eight feet tall rather than the, uh, standard ordinance requirements of six feet. So from the start, they'll have, uh, more height and width to them. Uh, obviously, staff sees that as a benefit that outweighs the, the earlier discussed deviations. Uh, commissioners, the proposal complies with the R three B requirements for the high-density. It's consistent with, uh, the comp plan, the previously approved P U Ds. Um, it is a public hearing, and, uh, I do have one item I'd like to get on the record. Uh, staff did have a conversation with one of the residents in the area, um, Doris Olson at fifty-four, uh, West Chester Square. She was concerned with the single access in and out of the development, especially with the S-curve along one hundred and twenty-second street. Uh, staff has looked at this. We don't see a traffic concern with the project. Uh, as you'll note, over time, uh, from, uh, two thousand and five to current, the, the project's been reduced from sixty-eight units to forty-three units. So we do see the number of units going down. Um, it is a residentially zoned area. Um, there, there isn't traffic congestion right now, but I know, um, Ms. Olson did wanna be on, on the record for that. Um, commissioners, uh, Brian Tutt with TC Homes is here. If you have questions for him. Uh, otherwise, Mr. Hillgardner and I can, I believe, address any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Selenia. Anybody have any questions that they would like, miss, to ask Mr. Selenia regarding this at this time? Mr. Thierry?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I have a few questions. Uh, Chris, what are the exact number of the units, proposed units?
Total proposed is forty-three units. Uh, I believe there are twenty-one units, if I can get to the right image. Twenty-one units, I would say, on the perimeter of the site, if you counted these around, and then twenty-two units, uh, core, uh, to, in the core of the project, if you will.
Um, by looking at the, the image of the site, I counted twelve cluster individual structures on the site. Am I correct?
I believe there are, I wanna say sixteen total buildings.
I'm referring to...
Okay, okay. Yes, when you're, uh, I know I, the preliminary plat is in here. Um, that's right. I apologize. I believe there are, there are nine blocks within the project, but within that block, there are, um, for example, these are two, uh, twin homes that are not directly adjacent to...
Existing.
Oh, yes. This, I apologize. This is what Dakota County has on file from a previous plat.
Okay. So this is not up to date as far as number of clusters?
As far, correct, as far as the clustering and the width of some of those units.
And each cluster have about three units roughly?
Uh, the... I believe there is one, four unit. The rest are two and three.
Can, um, can the applicant tell us what the cost of these units are? Are they the same approximate, uh, roughly, or are they different?
The applicant can get into some of the, I don't know, the market research, but some of the, uh, uh, the market area that he's looking at.
As, as far as the, uh, the existing end unit that is already there, which is very high-end style, uh, townhome, is there any, ever any discussion or issue with the city to ma, to match or somewhat to, can I incorporate some of the style or appearance as well?
Certainly, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Ideally, we would look at the, the project from scratch, um, but those, that building does confi, contain five units. Those are occupied, and because of the configuration, those are, um, those are owner-occupied units.
Condos.
Condos, correct. Condos, whereas the rest of the, uh, site would be, will be platted more as, will be platted as townhomes. Um, we understand the situation. There was limited discussion on making changes to that existing building.
The last issue I have, I always concern about the site that has only one access in and out the site, especially with the condensed, uh, housing development like this one here. Um, have, have fire department had a chance to review this as far as in and out in case of fire? Any, any issue with that?
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the fire department, as well as our engineering staff, has looked at this. Um, they have no concerns with the design. I, I think you could argue it's not the ideal situation, uh, but there are no, uh, concerns. This has been brought up a number of times at a staff level, and we're comfortable moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brederich?
Uh, Chris, just a couple of questions based around some of the conditions. Okay?
Certainly.
Um, but actually, let me start. The back of the buildings, the, the description you have up here looks really nice, and that is a, a big improvement from what we saw the, or what was given in our background the first couple of times. Is that also going to be the back of, um, what faces Parkwood, or is it just the back of the properties that face one hundred and twenty-second?
It would be the back of the perimeter...
Cause there's the two buildings that back up to Parkwood. One faces the, or backs up to the fire station.
It would be the perimeter buildings, so these four and, uh...
Those buildings?
These buildings. I'm not sure how many units that there are. Um, everything internal and, and then what is facing the fire station would be a different design.
Okay.
Uh, likely would not have the, um, would not have the overhang off the porch, some of the other detailing features that, um, that we're looking for along one twenty-second street.
If I remember correctly, too, the, the, the picture you have up there, really the setback is, is mostly being violated by those patios that we kinda asked for.
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Correct.
Um, I, I, this is kinda new. I, I don't understand where, one of the conditions where we are asking the applicant to, um, do planting around the existing building. How does, uh, cause I remember this being, i- is it, is it two different, well, it's different, you know, those are owner-occupied, and that's obviously not this, so help me with why the city's asking for, for that.
Certainly. The, um, the existing building is owner-occupied. It is within the same association. It's, it's sharing the same private roadway and so forth. Uh, unfortunately, the existing building, the landscaping hasn't been well-maintained because the association is represented by those five property owners. Uh, staff feels with the improvements being made to the rest of the site, some improvements can be made around that building. Hopefully, draw some continuity to the rest of the site. So it would not be substantial. Uh, we've spoken with the applicant, some minor adjustments to that landscaping just, uh, to improve it.
Okay. And then my last question. Uh, condition number six, I don't, help me with that.
Mm-hmm.
What are, what are we doing?
The, again, this gets to the timing of construction. We certainly hope these move off the market very quickly. If they don't, uh, as each building, not each unit, but ea, as each building is completed, we're looking for installation of the landscaping. So as we, as the developer moves around the site and around the perimeter of the built, perimeter of the site, uh, we're getting, the city and the neighbors are getting some landscaping in. So...
I'm sorry, I get, I, I get that we're gonna do, we're asking for that around one hundred and twenty-second. I was talking about number six. The plat shall be recorded with the language that the individual lots share common ownership of the outlots.
I'm sorry.
Within River Valley Commons Edition number, uh... I just, I'm trying to understand that as a condition.
That's all right. I had a, I had a, in a different order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We'll go off of the report. That's what, that's what everybody has. Um, yes, we're looking for, um, in a sense, we don't want these outlots going tax forfeit. Uh, we know they're, they're tied to the rest of the development. Um, we know that nothing can be developed on them, but we don't want, um, issues arising with the association letting them go tax forfeit, someone going to the county and picking them up. So there is a way through the association documents, when it's recorded, when all the, these plants are recorded, that each townhome also has a one forty-third share of those common lots.
So that's kinda common practice. I just hadn't seen that before.
It is, uh, it is now, uh, just because of the, the changes in the economy. Uh, typically ten years ago, that was never an issue because, um, uh, the economy was, was different.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions, or wish for...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a follow-up to Commissioner Brederich's, uh, last comment. I think I agree with, uh, each unit being, taking responsibility because they're part-owner of that area. And if there are forty-three units, and each one of them own, uh, one forty-third part of that thing and, uh, that area, and I think that what will happen is the, not only will the taxes be paid, uh, but the area will be maintained, um, and can be used by any one of the units. Um, Chris, I, uh, commend the city council for re, for your, uh, suggestion that, uh, the front of the buildings, we turn around. You know, at first, the front of the buildings were, were facing one twenty-second street. But now, and, and if, if that, that had remained, to get access to the front of the building, you probably had to go through a garage or something to, to go to, go to the entrance, to the entrance. Now, uh, you can enter the building from that, uh, road that was, is built, that twenty-foot road. Each, uh, building has its own entrance, and it makes it, uh, um, uh, better for the owners, and I think it looks better. Uh, generally, I think aesthetically and, and architecturally, the, 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 the plan looks very good. I, I look at it, and from what they had submitted in two thousand and five to now, this is a big improvement. And, uh, if they wanna sell these buildings, um, they have done the right thing. So, uh, I would like to commend, uh, Mrs. Olson, the resident who contacted you and spoke with you. This is what we want from our residents. They have a concern. They bring it up. They, they, they share their, um, views, and, uh, it, you know, it's taken into consideration by the commission and the council and staff. So, I think, uh, looks good to me, and so...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Any other questions, comments on that, from Mr. Selenia? All right. Thank you, Mr. Selenia. Um, Mr. Tutt, I believe, maybe you could step forward and give us your name and, um, business address for the record, please? I think there's maybe a couple of questions that...
This one here?
Yeah, that's fine.
My name is Brian Tutt. I'm with TC Homes. Uh, address is one three five zero one, Balsam Lane, Dayton, Minnesota, five five three two seven.
Thank you, Mr. Tutt. Um, Commissioner Thierry, I think maybe you had a question. Did you have a, wanna follow up on that?
Thank you, Chair. Um, costly units. Are they all the same based on the number of bedrooms? Or number of bedrooms are the same? They're, are they different?
Well, I guess we anticipate the, the sales value. Um, the, the, the lowest-priced ones are probably gonna be about two hundred, one ninety-nine-nine. Um, and the highest will be, I, I'm guessing our model will be right around two fifty, um, with the average sales price being about two twenty to two twenty-five.
I, I haven't seen the floor plans on this, so are they all the same number?
I, I haven't seen the floor plans on this, so are they all the same number of units and the same number of bedrooms for units?
On the perimeter, yes. That's, we, we've got about five units on the interior. They're gonna be tuck unders just because of the grading, just with the way that the utilities were set up. We just couldn't make it work. Majority of them are gonna be the same unit though.
And the price of two and three bedrooms are, are different, right?
No, they're all gonna be the same. So they're all gonna be three, three bedrooms, yep.
All three bedrooms?
All three bedrooms, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tutt?
I, I appreciate what you did with the back of the properties and I appreciate the, the landscaping that's been proposed along 122nd. I think that'll be a, a great addition to the community. I greatly appreciate that and I'm glad to, hopefully we can, we see this move forward. I would be in support of it to, cause the, the property, the property doesn't look good today.
Sure. No, we're very excited about the project, so.
And I, you feel comfortable today with the market? I mean, I think we've got several other developments that have mostly sold in the city that have pretty close floor plans to this. It looks like you're, it looks good, I think, probably?
The numbers that we're seeing, the market has improved. So, you know, we're encouraged by that and, you know, we're, we're hopeful that, that remains consistent, you know, through next year anyway and we're off to a good start, so.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. Any other questions for Mr. Tutt?
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Anybody that has any questions or comments and wishes to step forward with those, at this, this is the time to do it. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions or?
I just have a question.
Sure.
The occupants of the five units, they were informed of this meeting, right?
Correct.
Did anyone contact you regarding any concerns that may happen?
Staff has not been contacted. Actually, Ms. Olson is the, the only person we had communication with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Teary?
Thank you, Chair. I, I appreciate the effort for developer, developer of this project. However, I have few concern for this project. Number one, I'm basically concerned about one access to a long road, high dense residential development, despite of approval of fire department. The road to me, that was like about 20, 20 feet wide. I drove in that, the whole side. Take a look at the whole side and the road and everything else. So I, I believe and I hope the city would look into a secondary access for, for the ease of access into the site in and out. My other concern is despite of a big improvement to the, to image of, of the building from the architectural point of view, I still look at the style of being, being honest and frank. Remind me of 70s or early 80s duplexes units. And I, I, I'm looking at some, some of the more high-end type townhomes being approved and designed in the Burnton area. I don't see a close comparison to that. So still, I'm looking at about 70s or 80s style townhomes. It's not as a, as a negative comment. It's basically my, my view on this project. The third and last, I personally believe the area, this 122nd Street area is stuffed with high-density townhomes and apartment projects overflowing. For this reason, I am very hesitant to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Teary. I think this is a, a great improvement. I would commend the upgrade. I think it, it is excellent in that regard from what it was. Obviously, this has been blight and have been, has been vacant for a number of years. This is, this is the, it fits the zoning requirements zoned in that area for that type of density and that type of housing. That's what the city plan calls for in that area. So I, I would be in support of, of this as well. I guess with that, I'd look for.
Mr. Chair, I think I understand what Commissioner Teary is saying, but one has to consider that this land has been vacant for a while. It's unkept. You have to look at the market. We can, the developer can give you the best, but he can charge you 300, $400,000. If you want this to sell, I mean, I don't think, this is 70s, look at it, look at it. You know, I think it, it looks much better than what was presented 2005. And if you, the people gotta look at the affordability of homes and the people's ability to, to buy. And you provide a three-bedroom, good construction. It looks good. I think the developer has done a good job working with the city and coming up with the improvements. So I intend to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. And, and I think that that's part of the, the process here is every, everybody can obviously have a comment and a voice of opinion and appreciate all of Commissioner's comments on that. Commissioner Bradrick has, has anything to say?
I, I, I do agree that the, the drive inside is really tight. But I have to defer to, number one, the, the, the staff has believed that it's okay and I, I support their decision. And I'm also a firm believer that it's up to the developer to create something that's gonna sell. And they're the ones that are developing it, so I, I support them. And I, you know, I, I always like in this process, whatever conditions we put on it and there was no question about any of the conditions that I see in here. So I also would be in supportive of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. I would look for a motion at this time then?
I'll make.
Commissioner Bradrick?
Do I need, Chris, do I need to, or can I refer to the six conditions as outlined in our background?
That'd be perfect.
Okay. I, I move that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the application for preliminary and final plat to be known as River Valley Commons Second Edition and a planned unit development amendment for construction of 43 townhomes located north and east of intersection 122nd Street East and Parkwood Drive with the following six conditions listed in our background.
Thank you.
Second, that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. And second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Pass is 3-1. Commissioner Singh, Corey and Bradrick in favor, Commissioner Teary against. On this again, we'll go to the council meeting on November 19th, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Propco LLC Kinder Care Application for a variance to the required setback for a pylon sign located at 1800 Greenwood. Mr. Slania?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This is the sign in question. It was previously located at the Kinder Care Center at 1800 Greenwood Drive. Due to the county's right-of-way acquisition along County Road 5, which again relates to the 5 and 13 project, this pylon sign was removed. It's now sitting in storage and the property owner, through cooperation with Dakota County, is seeking the approval of a variance to relocate that sign. I'll get into the details because of the new configuration of the County Road 5 right-of-way. There are setback deviations or setback variances that we need to address. One of the parking stalls at Kinder Care was eliminated. That was acquired for right-of-way and mechanical equipment and so forth for the, the new signals that went in along County Road 5. With the loss of the parking stall, an additional parking stall had to be accommodated on-site and that parking stall falls right where this sign used to be. I can jump to another image. So here is County Road 5. Greenwood comes back around and you'll recall, I believe it was the last meeting, the commission reviewed the variance for River Ridge Apartments. In this situation, this parking stall has been eliminated for the additional right-of-way. This right-in, right-out has also been eliminated through the County Road 5 improvements. So the only access now into the site is from the east side along the shared access with the neighboring property and then up to the front parking lot. So this is additional green space. This is additional green space. The sign was removed and another parking stall or I should say replacement parking stall was put into this location. This is obviously not by choice of the property owner, but by public action through Dakota County. And again, we're looking at the justifications for a variance and the practical difficulties. And again, this is a textbook example. It's not a result of action taken by the property owner. Dakota County was involved. We are trying to get the business back up, well, get the business back to its original visibility and put back in kind to where it was prior to this. We had previously looked at, in conjunction with the county, relocating the sign down to this corner. And it would, obviously would provide a significant amount of visibility. However, there is some substantial utility, utilities in the area, not just improvements that were made with County Road 5, but there is a substantial sanitary sewer line that runs right through there. And in discussions with, with engineering staff, it's just not something we were comfortable with, that proximity of the sign to that area. So we were really left with two reasonable solutions for the variance. And I know, I apologize, this is a very busy drawing. One option, let me back up a second. So here is the right-in, that right-out that was eliminated. This red, double red indicates the new curb line that was installed as part of the project. So the parking is here, the Kinder Care building is over here. This is all new green space. Part of it falls to the Kinder Care property, part of it falls to the office building to the north. Option one would be relocation of the sign in this area, approximately 10 feet directly north of where it was, which is, which brings it out of the new parking stall and puts it into that green space requirement or that new green space. Again, because of its proximity to this side yard setback line or side yard, side property line, the variance is needed for that. The second alternative was back to this corner. The right-of-way line is this heavy blue that's right here. The sanitary sewer line runs right through this area. Staff's suggestion and working with the applicant would be to extend, let me jump back to, would be to extend the curb line around here, around the green space and essentially add that sign directly north of this utility box. And that is this location right here. That brings it out of the utility easement, brings it a good distance from the sanitary sewer line. It does require some additional curb work because right now that spot is sitting in the middle of the parking lot. But through partnership with the city and Dakota County, we have the ability to, to get that curb work done, add just a little more green space and get a new location for that pylon sign. This is something city, city staff really, really tries to avoid is giving the, giving the applicant two options or bringing two options to the planning commission. But in this case, the business has been out of a pylon sign most of the summer. We've got shorter, less daylight. We are hoping to get the project in and, and get the pylon sign back up before any frost comes in. And again, this is certainly a unique situation, but with the understanding, we're dealing with a, a variance to our setback requirements regardless of where the sign goes because it is a tough site. So we do have option one up here, option two up here. At the time, last week, the property owner hadn't decided which way they were gonna go and, and if they have, that's great. At this point, we're looking to move project forward and let them spend some time to, to sort through what, what they would prefer. Commissioners, I'll stand for questions. Dan Wilson with Wilson Development is here representing Dakota County. The property owner may have a representative here as well and, and I will take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Slania. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Slania? Thank you, Mr. Slania.
Thank you.
Any questions for any of the other, Mr. Wilson or the property owner?
This is a public hearing. At this time, I'd open the public hearing if anybody wishes to step forward and comment or have any questions at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Singh?
I guess, Mr. Chair, this is a tough one. You know, the Kinder Care people did not ask for this. The development plans for Highway 13 and 5 resulted in the removal of the sign. And I mean, in fairness to the business, they need a sign for visibility and for their business. I commend staff for working so diligently with all the options, with the very few options that were available to them. And I think I support staff in putting forward the final one that Chris pointed out to us along the bottom away from the sewer line is also has, what I'm not sure about, Chris, what's the distance away from the property edge there?
On option one?
Yes.
On option one, it is, I believe, within five feet of that northern property line.
It is, what's the required distance away from the property line?
It would be, for a pylon sign this size, it's 20 feet. So it's, it is, I believe it's five feet from that north.
That's a deviation.
Correct. It's, in either case, it's, in option one, it's gonna be a, a variance from the north property line and option two, it's gonna be a variance from the south.
Would the five feet from the property line create a problem?
No, because that is, that is all green space. Ideally, we'd like to have a little more space between those, but in this situation, it's one of the few spaces that, that one tender utility.
it's one of the few spaces that, that won't hinder utilities or parking or traffic or anything like that.
Yeah, I'm drawn towards that option, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Uh, commissioners, it, um, obviously, you, you can make the recommendation. What staff is, is recommending is approving both and let the property, let Kinder Care make the final decision when they're ready to, to move forward.
Chris, I'm, I'm supportive of this, is I just, uh, per the wording in the, the first condition, we are kind of being specific or, so the applicant can't put up two signs.
That is correct.
But they can make the decision, because, and I also agree that, you know, they've been through enough in that area, and they need to get a sign up as, you know, hopefully as soon as we can. So I would be in support of the options that staff has put in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. Um, I would also be in support of, of this. I think, uh, either, either one, I, I think works in the, in the setting. Obviously, it's a variance, but, like we said, there's not a whole lot of options here, and I think either one seems to be accommodate the area and doesn't basically pose a problem, it seems like, so, which is what we want to avoid, obviously. So I would be in support of this.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'd make a motion?
Go ahead.
Um, I move that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the variance for the required setback to relocate the Kinder Care Learning Center pylon sign located at eighteen-hundred Greenwood Drive with the following conditions. Number one, this variance approval allows a location for the sign ten feet north of the previous sign location or eight feet east of the proposed location. The, the, the sign shall not be placed within a thirty-foot, uh, utility easement as originally requested. Uh, number two, the sign, a sign permit must be obtained for the relocated sign. And number three, a curb line must be established to separate the sign location from the parking lot for the southern location.
Thank you.
Option two.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All oppose? That passes four-zero, and we'll go to the council again on November nineteenth, I think.
Correct.
Next Tuesday.
All right. Um, the last item on the agenda is any updates, commissioners? Any updates?
I have none, Chair.
Thank you. Staff?
Um, uh, no changes, commissioners. Uh, we have, uh, two items on the agenda for the next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Commissioner Singh moved. Second, Commissioner Teary. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye passes four-zero. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.